Regular meeting of June 13th, Scott County Planning Commission. If you are going to speak again, please sign up at the lectern. Charlie, you want to swear everybody in now?
Yes, sir. Everybody signed in to speak, if you can stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the statement here that makes it nice to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First on the agenda is approval of the May invoices. Need a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. B, approval of the May 9th minutes. Should have a copy in there. Please read them. And then I'll need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the May 9th minute.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Moran.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mifflin. All in favor?
Aye.
And for the record, Jeff Caldwell is absent tonight. Approval of the June agenda. We do, I think, have a couple changes.
Go ahead.
Well, should we wait to?
Yeah, you can do that.
All right. Well, all right, let's do that. So, I need approval of the June agenda.
So move.
Mr. Smith?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Mizell. All in favor? Aye? Say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Items for postponement or withdrawal. We do have, it's actually a continuance of old business, A, FSP 2019-17, the Jones property, final subdivision plat to divide one track into four tracks, creating one 6.14 acre track, one 5.88 acre track, one 5.04 acre track, and a 5.16 acre remainder track located on Willow Brook Lane. We have, we need, do we need, Charlie, a motion to continue?
I believe the Chair can do that, or by motion, either way.
Okay. I'd like to just take a motion. Motion to continue?
I make a motion.
Make a motion by Mrs. Mizell?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All in favor to continue? Say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that'll be continued.
To next month's.
To next month's meeting. So if you're here for the Jones property, we'll hear that next month. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. We have a lot that are eligible, so I think we'll just go one by one by one, correct? First one that's eligible for consent agenda is FSP 2019-18, Marlane Farms, number one property, final subdivision plat to divide one track into five tracks, creating a 19.279 acre track, one 12.714 acre track, one 7.705 acre tract, one 10.045 acre tract, and a 10.628 acre remainder tract located at 3701 Paris Pike, US 460. Is anybody here to speak against or for this applicant? Application, I should say. Okay, if not, that one's consent eligible. Charlie, would you say we could vote on all of them at the same time?
You can do all of them.
Let's do that.
Or you can do them one at a time.
No, we'll try to knock them all out at the same time. Second one that's consent eligible.
If I want to point out to them, there is someone here for it, but there's no one that stood the same.
To speak against it.
And clients are here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Well, if you're for it.
Yeah. No, if you're for it, you don't need to say a word.
Okay.
If you're against it, that's what I'm asking for. The next one that's consent eligible is PDP 2019-23, Eco Fiber Kentucky Preliminary Development Plan for a 50,000 square foot building located at 190 Corporate Boulevard. If anybody's here against that or wants to hear that, speak up or let us know. Otherwise, we're going to probably put that on the consent. It's consent eligible. Next one then is number B under new business, FSP 2019-24, Chavers Property, final subdivision plat to subdivide a 5.64 acre lot from apparent tract of 18.97 acres located at 815 Locust Fork Road. Anybody here against that application? Good. C, PSP 2019-25, 109 Marketplace Circle, preliminary subdivision plat to create a 1.05 acre lot and a .757 acre lot located at 109 Marketplace Circle. Anybody here against or want to hear that application? Perfect. So if I did my math right, there's four that are consent eligible. No one's here to hear those. I need a motion to approve old business, number B, and under new business, A, B, and C.
I make a motion.
So motion by Mrs. Mizell?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Stone. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Perfect. Thank you. The only thing left then is?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, for the ones that are approved, please come line up in front of Mr. Perkins, and he'll get you to sign your application. Thank you all. Nice. And if... Maybe we'll give it a moment to let them clear out. If y'all don't mind, we'll just take a minute, let them all sign, so we can kind of get back to quiet.
Mrs. Marshall? Right there. Settle up, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, just the one. And then we'll hear bluegrass tomorrow.
Sign one of those, and one stays with us, one's yours.
Somebody have to?
What else do we got here? Oh, 109 Marketplace Circle. What we have to do is this. Oh. It's a public hearing. I've seen you for about 40 years. What are you here for? Are you here for one of these? Under the pink sheet.
Bob, you live over there?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. I think about your office.
I'm going to the league field.
Thank you.
Screw up.
See Frank. See you, Chip.
See you.
I'll say, Joe, if you give it a minute, let them clear out, and we'll get, jump on C right away.
This was on here.
This is going to be on here.
Oh, yeah, he's signed. Yeah. Yes, thank you. Charlie, clear them off. Here's a good sign. Oh, vacation. Good for you. I won't be here next month. I'll be in Alaska with my wife for our 30th anniversary.
You just drive around and see where it is.
Yeah, a week in the ocean, and then a week in the valley, in the Fairbanks. Never done it before. I did it for our 30th, because I figured I ain't going to make it to 50. Do it while I'm somewhat healthy. All right. Yeah, seven days of cruise, glaciers. I'll tell you about it afterwards. All right, we're ready, continue. C, we're going to, under old business, ZMA-2019-22, Ashton Grove Commercial Zone Change Request for 2.35 acres from R2 PUD to B4 located south side of La Cleland Circle and Bevins Lane, and this is a public hearing. So we need to go, just announce it's a public hearing.
Just open the public hearing.
Open it up as a public hearing.
Okay. This is a zone change request in Georgetown. A request to change from R2 PUD to B4 commercial. The property is part of what I think is called Ashton Grove Retirement Community, or Assisted Living Community. It's south of the bypass, west of US 25 at Bevins Lane. The previous assisted living facility, I don't think I have an overall of it, but it covered this 80, approximately 80 acres. South of the bypass, there's a 10 acre parcel, and then the remainder was behind Ederwood Subdivision and behind Landmark Office Center. The original application for that included some commercial up front, but they dropped that during the initial review of the project. They are now coming back and asking for that commercial. So this whole area with, up here, within the urban service boundary was zoned R2 PUD, and then it backs up to the green belt, so the area outside the urban service boundary in the back was zoned C1 Conservation. So the request is from that previously approved R2 PUD to now this B4 category. The property is in an area that's planned office, P1 professional office on our future land use map. We updated the comprehensive plan in the last two years. We left that area office. The original request was for B2 Highway Commercial, which is more open-ended commercial district that allows auto sales and heavy kind of land-intensive commercial uses. We requested that they downscale that to B4, which is our community commercial zone, which is retail office, restaurants, or some retail uses allowed, but mostly it's geared towards service, service-type uses. It would allow medical offices, which is what they've indicated, some of the uses they intend for the center, but it also allows smaller-scale, kind of walkable commercial. Doesn't allow the large parking, paved parking RV sales or car sales. So that's what, that's what is avoided in the B4 zone. Anytime there's a zone change request, we have to see if, first thing we look at is our comprehensive plan to see if it complies with the comprehensive plan, and then if it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan, they have to show that either there's been a change in the area, either social, physical, or other changes in the area, or that the zoning in place is inappropriate for the property. They have shown with the change in request to B4 that they are meeting the main requirement of KRS zone changes, that it does comply with the comprehensive plan. This B4 zone is sufficiently similar to the office zone, that it does comply with that general future land use designation, so they don't have to show any findings that they meet the other two requirements. Again, I guess to go over the general site plan, they are showing the 2.35 acres here on the bypass frontage. There is, there was a traffic study done with the original application. It did show a need for a left turn lane at the entrance, and they are doing those improvements as part of the assisted living center, so this will be complete prior to any development of the commercial area. There is a private road that serves these retirement cottages and then the assisted living facility, so they will, they will need to submit a plat with an access easement over this private road and a shared maintenance agreement before the property can be developed. As you know, with a zone change, Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and it'll have to go to City Council for final approval. After the zone change, if it is approved, they'll have to come back to the Planning Commission with the development plan for the property, and in this case, they'll have to come back with the subdivision plat to creating, actually creating this lot, creating the access and maintenance agreement to utilize the private driveway, and showing how they're going to actually develop the property. What they show with the zone change is a concept plan, so as part of the concept plan, they're showing potentially splitting this 2.35 acres into two lots, with the building on each lot facing the bypass, with parking in the rear, and a landscape buffer that provides a screen from the residential in Ederwood Subdivision and from the residential that they're building on the remainder of the property. So, to summarize, we are recommending approval, because they do meet the future land use map plan for this area. They will have to still, if approved, they'll have to go to City Council for approval. If approved, they'll have to come back to the Planning Commission with the development plan and the subdivision plat. Believe the property has been annexed already. The only condition of approval I actually put for them to sign is that they, they come back with the preliminary development plan and subdivision plat, so.
Any questions for Joe?
So, is the owner of this property the owner of the senior living?
Yes.
Okay. But, but they're going to split the property and sell, sell that off, or they going to develop it? Do you know?
I'm not sure if they're going to develop it or sell it off, but they will, it will have to be, they will have to create a plat to create two separate lots there, just because it's served by a private driveway, access easement. So likely it'll be sold off to be developed. I think that was their intent, but I think they can answer that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll have the applicant up.
Okay.
Would the applicant step up and speak on behalf?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Bruce Langford, for the record. I'm here with Mr. Jack Lux and Carl Snyder, representing the owners of the project, and Kevin Rich, who is the design engineer for the project. Joe pretty well presented the information. He gave a pretty accurate description of what's going on. The two lots will be marketed or designed, built to design. That's to be determined, but it could be either way. Other than that, we don't have much comment. We want to thank Joe for his recommendation. We're here to find out if we can get approval to move ahead and answer any questions that you might have.
I guess to answer or ask of Mr. Mifflin's question, will it be owned by the corporation, or will they sell it off?
It'll be the same ownership.
It will be the same ownership?
No.
Okay. Any other questions?
If I could.
Yes, please. Step up, state your name.
I'm Jack Lux, one of the owners with Carl. This is a very sensitive area for us, and obviously the neighbors would be very sensitive to us. This is the largest project we'll have ever done in our retirement centers, and so we're enormously sensitive that whatever we put there, it has good architectural detail and takes care of all of our neighbors. So I think your protection is, we've got the most at stake to make sure that this is really going to be nice, so we don't know who the customer is going to be, and whether we will be doing it as a joint venture with them or sell it to them, but we'll be very critical on what they do, as well, as well as you will be.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll hear from, Mr. Griffin's here to speak, or at least ask a couple questions. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin or Ms. Beverly, if you'd like to speak, come on up. State your name for the record.
Just in case.
Good evening, my name is Bob Griffin. I reside at 115 Dogwood Drive in the Ederwood Subdivision, and, and I guess I'm speaking home. Yeah, it's, it's right in, it's right in the corner of the, of the proposed zone change, and our only concern is the fact that, given these potential zone change, that it may create an environment not as conducive to peace and quiet as we were originally proposed to with the senior living center. And so by that, we just want to just express those concerns on behalf of the neighborhood. I know this is very early in the process, however, we just want to be, we just want to make it known at this point that there are some concerns among us and our neighbors that if this is allowed to get, if it's allowed to go too far, that we'll find ourselves, you know, in a situation where we're having noise late at night and traffic at all hours, and that's not really what we were in support of from the beginning, and so we just want to be sure that as that moves forward, that we do maintain that commitment to, again, creating an environment that is still conducive to the neighbors that'll be in the immediate area. That's basically all we have to say. Again, I know from the preliminary meetings that we've had with these folks and how they presented it, that it is their intention to do just that, and we just want to just let them know that, you know, we're just, we're just aware that, you know, there are changes potentially coming on, and we just, we just want to try to work together to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music moving forward. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Langford, do you want to maybe respond, or I may have a question for Joe, but either way.
No, I think Mr. Lux has indicated that he understands that it's a sensitive project, and they are sensitive to the neighbors, and they're going to work and do everything they can to make this a compatible operation.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Joe, I have a question for you. Under B4, which is community commercial?
Yeah.
And to Mr. Griffin's point, could they sell this off and it become a 2:00 AM nightclub? Because I mean, if I were in, at Lot 5, I'd be very concerned. Under B4, could they truly say, hey, we decide we want to sell it off and open up a roosters? I mean, that's, you know, I think they could be open midnight, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. Can it happen?
They could do a restaurant, yeah. A nightclub.
I mean, they've given their word that they don't want to, but I mean, you know, wouldn't be a bad place for a poppin' restaurant.
I see that make a back concern.
I know it does.
Why did they pull that out in the initial thing?
I think they're going to answer, but...
Listen, it's going to be green space.
Couldn't they do deed restriction on that?
Or could we require, as a planning and zoning commission, to do a deed restriction if they're saying that that's what they want to build, and we ask that they do put a deed restriction? Charlie, that might be an attorney question.
Yeah, ordinarily, no, but what you could do is express your concern about it, have them stipulate that they'll put such a deed restriction on, to sweeten the pot, if you will.
Well, maybe I'll let one of them, or Mr. Langford, answer that question.
Mr. Chairman, Carl Snyder would like to respond to that.
Well, I think...
Sorry to stir the pot, by the way.
No, no, it's a very fair, and it's exact, it's very fair, and we completely understand and agree. We, we have cottages, as you can see here, 101, 103, one of, just the numbers on the plan, but we do not want to have a nightclub there either, or we will go out of business very quickly. It's not our intent to do anything that would be up late, and our residents are 85 years old, and they don't want 25-year-olds speeding in there in cars either, and we wouldn't do a very good job.
Would you be comfortable with a deed restriction?
On...
If, I mean, if you're truly building...
On a nightclub, sure.
I mean, Charlie, how would we word that?
Right.
It's a restaurant, that's not a nightclub.
No, no.
You know?
But I mean, if you put a, I don't know what you could put there that...
That's, that's something I, we would need to kind of think about.
And I think we're, I think we have to come back, don't we? When we actually have a real plan. I think that the purpose of this was just to do the zone change.
Come back to us?
My guess is we'll have to go to...
It's a travel plan subdivision plan.
And, and, yes, and I think one of the things is, like, I think we could offer up on the front end here, too, to make you feel comfortable, is maybe we could set up a meeting with your neighborhood association, who we've talked in the past when we were first starting this, and making sure we're communicating through construction, and making sure we were meeting the needs of the neighborhoods and not causing nuisance. So, we're happy to continue those conversations, and when we have something, actually, as part of our financing, we're not even allowed to develop this until we're done anyway. So we got another two years of good hard work to get this thing up and running before we would even consider coming back with any sort of plan.
I think the plans look great. My fear was, is develop it, we approve it, or, you know, prepare to develop, we approve it, and next thing you know, you sell it off to a late-night restaurant, which would disturb the neighbors a little bit.
And it would disturb us.
It would disturb them.
We wouldn't have a very good business.
I'm just trying to protect our community.
Oh, understood.
Thank you, sir.
So we are aligned completely in that regard, and there will not be a roosters here.
We have elderly people that live in Pop 4 and 3, and so that's probably why they're not here.
Bobby's not getting any younger.
They're up in their 80s, he's not right now, I'm sure. This may look like it, but...
I'm right with them. All right, well, thank you.
I enjoy the United Medical Builders.
That's what I figured you put.
And they call me doctor. So maybe that's for...
Office pharmacy, whatever. All right, thank you all. Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Wiseman has a question.
No, I have a question, just to comment, but go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
It's a comment.
It's comments, the floor is yours, sir.
The only control we have is at the zone change level. Once the zone change is done, it's probably a cat's out of the bag. So I'd like to see any restrictions that we're interested in be upfront now.
Well, and I was going to suggest, if I might, Mr. Wiseman, while we don't know the language and maybe the specifics of what that might be, or at least what might be appropriate for that, if we could just simply have them stipulate that they understand that that is very likely a condition to be placed on the development, so that it is compatible both with the existing residential and with your existing development, because both of those things, I think, need reasonable protection. But we just don't have the language, we don't, I just assume we do that after we think about it. But they could stipulate that, that could be part of the record, and at that point, we can come back and we can revisit that when the time is right.
And we'll get to hear them again anyway, so we should be fine. All right. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Otherwise, I guess we'll close the public hearing, correct?
I would like to hear them say on the... I would like to hear them say on the record that, yes, they stipulate that.
Mr. Langford?
So stipulated.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. All right, so I guess we'll close public hearing. So, we need to, we need a motion, and. We have a motion to approve by Mrs. Mizell.
I second it.
And we have a second by Mr. Stone. Do we need a roll call, because it's.
Yes, for zone change, yes, sir.
So, for zone change, ZMA 2019-22, again, Mizell made the motion, Mr. Stone second. We'll go through roll call. Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
And a yes is to approve. Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell's absent. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mizell, Mrs. Mizell?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. And you can come up here and sign, and. All right. Next on the agenda is Bluegrass Tomorrow Regional Land Use Plan Resolution.
See you, Bob.
See you, Bobby. All right, Joe, it's yours, or Bluegrass Tomorrow?
All right, yes. I'm just going to introduce Rob Rumke. He's the president, CEO of Bluegrass Tomorrow. It's a regional advocacy group, nonprofit group, that's started as, I think, a smart growth organization. It's kind of morphed into doing a ton of different things, but they've been working on a regional land use initiative for the past year at least, where they've looked at comp plans, different communities in the Bluegrass, kind of compared them to see where they were on the same page as far as their goals and objectives. They've done a couple of public meetings. And I think the idea generally is to get counties to communicate and cooperate more in the land use area. We have Fayette County that has 50, 40-acre minimum lot sizes in the ag districts, and the surrounding counties vary, you know, to have five-acre minimums, but with the restrictions in the urban service boundary in Fayette County, it's pushing a lot of development out to the other counties, impacting farmland, not just in, you know, the inner ring, but even the outer ring. So, the idea is to get us talking. We do, there is a regional land use committee at the Bluegrass Ad that brings people together, that it's been the past 10 years while I've been here, that's been more of a, kind of, taking care of HB 55 training-type things. Hasn't been hugely successful in bringing all the planning planners from the region together. Every time, it only meets every other month, and hasn't been hugely successful as far as bringing people together, I don't think. But, I mean, there's a lot of potential there, and I think it can take on a lot more of the land use oversight and communication role. But I think Bluegrass Tomorrow, it's important that they're doing this to get us all communicating about land use now. And I'll let Rob talk a little bit about how these principles were generated. But I think the idea is to take them around to all the planning units in the Bluegrass to get all them on board by adopting the resolution at the local level. And then, once we're kind of all communicating again, then we can figure out where we're going to take it from there. But, we're one of the initial planning commissions, I think, to see this resolution. So, you know, there's no pressure to adopt it, but we'd like to present it to you and get your feedback. And I think most of the stuff in there jives pretty closely with what's in our comp plan. I mean, we have all the principles pretty closely share what our principles are in our comp plan. And that's, that's purposeful, because we've kind of been communicating as counties, what priorities do we share that we can put into a document that we can all sign on to, and then kind of move forward from there. So, I'll let Rob give his presentation.
Does this operate?
Yeah, it's a page down, if you can see it. So, page down, right here, should move you through it.
Okay, all right, thanks, Joe. And, Rob Rumke, Bluegrass Tomorrow President and CEO. I've been involved with Bluegrass Tomorrow for close to 20 years. The organizations that are on your screen are the various organizations that we work with just to begin this process. So, Fayette Alliance, Bluegrass Area Development District, the Bluegrass Land Conservancy, which Bluegrass Tomorrow started, and Woodford Forward. Okay, so, Bluegrass Tomorrow was organized, a little bit of background, organized in 1989, which was a big year here in Scott County, when Toyota was being built. Alex Warren was one of the original founders of Bluegrass Tomorrow, along with several big horse farm owners, various businesses in Scott County, Fayette County, and other counties that wanted to see quality of life preserved in the Bluegrass region. And most importantly, the quality of agricultural soils in the Bluegrass region. Our key value, our organization is about economic development. And that quality of life and economic development are inextricably linked. You can't have one without the other. And that's what we, from the very beginning, where Mr. Warren and others were all about beginning comprehensive planning back in 1989, beginning the concepts of moving forward with the PDR program and these kinds of things back in those years. That's the roots of Bluegrass Tomorrow. We have two divisions, the education, Bluegrass Higher Education Consortium Division. We work very closely with Georgetown College, and they've been good friends to us. And then, Bluegrass Forever Green is all about conservation, preservation, and sustainability, the roots of the organization. In fact, we've worked with Joe, and we've worked with Scott County on the trails planning that we've done here. Bike hike, horseback trails, and trying to get the Legacy Trail up from the Horse Park into Scott County. That's Bluegrass Tomorrow. We've been working with you. These are various things that we've been talking about and working with, with our conversations with the region, trails and greenways, energy innovations, water infrastructure, food and agriculture, and of course, land use planning. And then, we've got health and wellness and transportation coming up this year. These are some of our sponsors that have gotten behind our Bluegrass Forever Green initiative. So, this is our footprint. It's 18 counties. It's the first tier around Lexington, Fayette County, and the second tier of counties. The only difference between us and the Bluegrass Area Development District is the ad does not carry Montgomery County, and we do. So, we did some research. Stiteson-Horbison, the Bluegrass Ad worked with us to look at our Bluegrass region and who is doing what. So, these are the counties that have some joint or county-wide planning. That means you cooperate with the cities and county governments in your county. So, and these are counties that believe in preserving agricultural lands. They have that in their comprehensive plans. So, that's pretty good. And what that means, preserving agricultural lands preserves agriculture industry in general, acknowledges some kind of express legal mechanisms to preserve agricultural lands, and in many cases encourages infill and redevelopment. So, the urban service boundary counties who have some kind of urban service boundary are these counties. And others are discussing it. And by the way, on that previous slide, joint or county-wide planning, it doesn't mean that Mercer, Garrett, Estle Powell, Montgomery, Nicholas do not have comprehensive planning. They just have it specifically in each city and the county. It's not combined. So, I thought that would be interesting to you. So, here's the thoroughbred acreage in the Bluegrass region, roughly 100,000 acres. And that relates to the thoroughbred industry, and of course, Fayette, Woodford, Bourbon, Jessman, and Scott in that order. I think you'd find it interesting, this is a shot from space in terms of the lights at night. And you obviously can see where the farmland is in the Bluegrass region, where it's dark. And I like to show this slide because it really is a telling scenario, where the cities and urban services boundaries stop are pretty much consistent with these lights. This is also really important, because that green splotch right there in the center are the prime agricultural soils. You can see Scott County there, the northern part of Scott County, not so much. Some of the counties in the Bluegrass region, not so much, but Bourbon, Woodford, Fayette, and going down the 127 corridors, 127 and US 27 corridors, you know, that's some of the more prime farmland. And of course, you know, we're always planning for rapid population growth. You deal with this at every one of your meetings. You know, these are the areas that are growing quickly. Our traditional philosophies have always been that we'd like for population growth to sort of follow those main highways and corridors in our region. 75, 64, 27, 127, 68, 25 would be included in that. That's the general philosophy. The Bluegrass Agriculture Economic Development Cluster, won't go a lot into this, a lot of these slides, I can do a whole slideshow for you, but I'm sort of, I know you're at the end of your meeting, and I'm whittling this down. But you can't see that very well, but, you know, it's not just farmers, it's not just cattle, it's not just horses, it's not just equine. There's all kinds of businesses that are a part of this. Just in Fayette County alone, it's like 92 million. The American Farmland Trust recently released a study, Farms Under Threat. And Kentucky has lost 499,000 acres of farmland in the last decade to low-density housing rural development. So, houses being built on 5, 10-acre-type plots is what we're talking about. These are the counties in red, where you see high-quality farmland and high development. Scott County is one of those counties, and you can see the others in the Bluegrass region, Fayette, Bourbon, Woodford, Scott, Clark, Harrison, Mercer, Boyle, Lincoln, Montgomery. We are on the World Monument Watch List. You may have heard this. It was released originally back in 2006. We're still on it. And it's all about protecting our beautiful Bluegrass cultural landscape. So, the purpose of starting this regional land use partnership, while Bluegrass Tomorrow in the past, as I mentioned, started, the Bluegrass Conservancy, it really gave birth, if you will, to the PDR program in Fayette County, and now Scott County and Woodford County have followed with startup programs. Fayette Alliance and Woodford Forward were sort of spinoffs from Bluegrass Tomorrow. But the main purpose of this process has been to raise awareness of key land use-related issues, and to continue to discuss those specific issues as a region, not just as individual counties. The proposed resolution that you have in front of you is a result of 18 months of work and over 150 regional stakeholders participating. Mayor Prather participated in this, Joe participated in this, Claude Christensen, former mayor of Sadieville, has really chaired the committee, that, this RLUP committee, and there were others. Started with the conversation with the regional land use planning back in 2017. We also have a next summit being planned for this August. And that coincides, that date with a date that all the county judges and mayors will be at the Bluegrass Ad for a meeting, so we feel like we can get them on the same day, where this will be during the day, and that was at night. This original summit, if you will, had elected officials, planners, and stakeholders from throughout the 18-county region. And you see the vice mayor of Lexington in that picture. So, some of the principles of agreement, the idea going into the event was to lay out where we are, and then to begin to define some things that we could begin to agree to, some very basic things that we could agree to. First, there's fundamental need for responsible land use planning in the Bluegrass region. Second, preserving agricultural lands and limiting sprawl are already recognized and generally accepted as being of great importance to the region. These concepts are already contained in the majority of municipal county and joint county comprehensive plans in the region. And that was easy to come to agreement to, because we did the research, and it was like 16 of the 18 counties already agreed to that, because it was already in their comprehensive plans. There's a fundamental need for better communication in the region between cities, counties, planners, elected officials, and stakeholders. So, this is probably the most important one. This group, this RLUP, is not about creating regional comprehensive planning, not at all. We're about developing regional communication, to where you guys know what's going on in Fayette County, to where Clark County knows what's going on in Madison County. You know, some things that came up, Mayor Prather, for example, was very verbal in some of these discussions about the Bluegrass Stockyards, and not being consulted about that, because it was sitting over the Royal Springs Aquifer. Did anybody really look at that? No, they hadn't. They hadn't discussed it, because the cities and counties did not get together and talk about it. Another instance was the extension of the runway at Bluegrass Station. Clark County was just moving forward with that, never talked to Fayette County about it at all. So, you know, these are some of the things that we just want to make sure that we're putting these issues out, so that we're all talking about them. You need an organization like ours, who we're all about connecting regional organizations and governments and counties and cities. And that's the purpose of Bluegrass Tomorrow, so that's why we're trying to do this. There was also strong consensus that the original group that began planning this event would continue to work so that we could come to you today and bring this resolution forward. So, this group has been working, as I mentioned, for 18 months. So, what have we been doing? We've been sifting through the original comments, organizing priorities. We were drafting additional principles of agreement. You saw the first three that came out of the initial event, drafting the resolution that's being presented to you today, and beginning to draft a strategic plan of action. The idea is to create momentum so that we can begin to take this to our cities, counties, you know, and all of our municipal governments, and have them sign off on these basic principles of agreement. Some of the other principles of agreement that have, that are contained in your resolution, we talked about the fundamental need, the Bluegrass regional landscape, this is really a draft vision for the whole process. The Bluegrass regional landscape is our defining feature and identified world monument. The Bluegrass regional landscape is our defining feature and identified world monument renowned for extending agriculture and natural resources. Our prime soils should remain in agriculture through carefully considered intentional collaborative balance of economic development and land use planning, where our shared boundaries are gateways to distinct counties and cities whose character should be enhanced, developed, celebrated, preserved as part of our unique Bluegrass brand. So, Scott County, every city in Scott County are part of that unique Bluegrass brand. We want to preserve everything that each of those cities and counties are doing and what you are doing, but part of that larger whole. The other ones, there's a fundamental need for better communication. We talked about that. Central belief that there should be a balanced collaborative approach with shared responsibility for planning for both urban and rural land, giving due consideration to appropriate use of agricultural and land resources, respecting reasonable and realistic environmental sensitivities and addressing all relevant cultural terrorism heritage and natural resource needs and opportunities in the Bluegrass region. We talked about the fact that limiting sprawl and promoting infill, et cetera, are of great importance to the region and they're already in these plans in general already. There's a fundamental belief that for new roads, road improvement projects, and multimodal transportation services would foster greater connectivity in the Bluegrass region. We're not saying no new roads, no new development. We're just saying let's do it the right way and let's do it together and let's communicate together. There was widespread consensus regarding the need to repurpose land and structures at the end of their current life cycles, big box buildings, other brownfield and infill opportunities. And then, lastly, that this broad-based regional group would continue its work, which we have done, but also continue by asking you and city and county governments, who else should we have on this committee? Who should represent you? So, Joe has been serving on that committee, comes from time to time. We don't get him there all the time because he's doing your work. So, food for thought, what's next? We believe there's an environment of receptivity for the first time, really. You know, I started doing regional work some 20 years ago and it was not a good time then. In some ways, I believe that the counties around Fayette County are believe more in regionalism now than Fayette County does. And I believe with the new administration in Fayette County, they're going to come back a long way in the future. Secondly, we are going to continue to engage planning commissions and professional planners of the region in this process, and we want you to be a part of this. We want to expand the partnership inclusiveness, connectedness, and have cities and counties appoint people to serve on this group. We're not going to call it a commission. We're not going to call it a committee. I mean, it's RLUP, the Regional Land Use Partnership. And that's for a reason because we're not trying to formalize this in any way right now. We're just beginning this process. These principles are going to be modified in the future. And as I mentioned, passing this resolution and moving forward just creates momentum for collaboration. Other input, and we've had a lot of other input already, a meeting with Lexington and Fayette Urban County Government on July the 2nd, and I've gotten a bunch of feedback from them. As we move into the planning document, okay, so I'm talking about strategic planning, not planning and zoning. When we move into that document, that's where we're going to make a lot of draft changes and that sort of thing. And that'll go into the overall planning document. And, you know, what's next? Communication between cities and counties are going to be among the first principles that we begin to tackle. Each of these principles in the resolution, in this process, are going to be goals in the strategic plan. And there will be strategies that come forth from this. And there already is a draft plan that I have at this point that we've begun to discuss. And, you know, it brings up great ideas, like, for example, Bluegrass Tomorrow through the Bluegrass Higher Education Consortium facilitates the Academic Leadership Academy Program for faculty and staff throughout the Bluegrass region. It's just like Leadership Scott County or Leadership Kentucky, but it's for faculty and staff of our colleges and universities. Why not elected officials with that same kind of process? Or elected officials and planning commissioners that could be a part of that process where we learn about each other, we learn about the issues in our region, just by having a couple of those kinds of sessions a year? So, that's one of the things that we're talking about in communication in the final plan. So, and right now, we're looking for some kind of resolution of support from you, that you think this is a good idea, that we should bring it forward to Scott County Fiscal Court, that we should bring it forward to our cities, Georgetown and our cities here in Scott County. So, questions? Anybody have any questions?
So, Rob, regionally, speaking of your RLUP in respects to the issues specifically related to Scott County and its landfill operation? So, we've been in a lot of public meetings and a lot of issues concerning our landfill.
Right.
In respects to that mediation piece, would you be able to come in and do a lot of the, not the groundwork, but say the mediation, try to get our citizens in Scott County to understand the impact and the benefits of that land use?
Well, I think what Bluegrass Tomorrow was always, we're always going to do. And by the way, you are talking to a runkey, so I know a little something about landfills. I grew up in that business up in Northern Kentucky, Cincinnati, and I do know a little bit about it. But we're going to do what's best and is inclusive of all. So, if the landfill issue you're having here is something that other counties are also dealing with, that would be something that we could get involved with. And certainly, if we could help in any way, we've actually come and served on a couple of working groups that Joe has had in planning and things like that. So, yeah, we'll take that under consideration. It could be something that we could help you with. Any other questions, Mr. Wiseman?
Have you considered the soil conservation districts in the various counties involved? That might be something.
Yes, they really should be. And as we reach out, you know, Ag Extension Offices and Soil Conservation and others are going to really need to be involved with this. To this point, they've not really been involved, but through some of these other organizations that we're working with, we've been discussing that, but there's not been soil conservation people.
Not that these people on those committees want another meeting.
Right.
But they should be involved and help them.
That's exactly what we're talking about, right? We're talking about our precious soils. Any other questions, comments?
What, I spent 25 years in the military. Have you had the National Guard involved in this? They have resources that...
I never thought about that.
That could be used in most counties at specific times.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I'll take a note of that.
I know we talked Monday about, we were just going to hear this, and I don't think we're voting on anything today is my understanding, but as I read through this land use resolution several times prior to Monday, as well as between Monday to today, and I kept looking and circling things, Board of Directors for the Bluegrass Tomorrow Incorporated, regional stakeholders and organizations, and then stakeholders in the region. And then, I got to the last paragraph, last sentence of number seven. And I'm not a big word person, but it says maximize the opportunities for economic development and promulgation of our Bluegrass brand. So, I looked up the definition of promulgation because I don't use a lot of big words. I'm kind of a simple person. It says the official announcement of a new law or ordinance whereby the law or ordinance is put into effect. Well, I've seen in emails, I mean, this draft is dated September of 18. I think I seen an email that dated prior to September of 18, yet this is kind of a 10-minute presentation and you're looking for a buy-in. And I think it's kind of unfair to us to be buying into something with a 10-minute presentation. So, I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Well, Joe, would you say something?
I was going to say, just a resolution of support. You don't have to do it today, tonight, but, you know, read through it.
What's interesting is there's an approved by the chair and approved by the president and CEO of Bluegrass Tomorrow, and there's datelines already ready to be signed, which wouldn't be bought.
Yeah, I think that was a resolution that was taken to the board of Bluegrass Tomorrow. That's why that's on there.
Right. Yeah, any resolution that would be take, move forward to Georgetown or Scott County Fiscal Court would obviously not have our signatures at the bottom.
Right.
That was just our board approving that wording. Now, as we moved through all of this, you know, the one thing that we learned is that, you know, we're not going to get everybody to agree to every word. And that's why we are even saying as we get into the next part of this process, the strategic planning process, you know, we're going to re-wordsmith everything as we go through this. But we're looking for more now, and again, it doesn't have to be today, but that you agree that this, conceptionally, is a good idea to continue to move forward with the primary goal of communicating with our neighbors. That's really the primary goal of this. And it's the same way that we started the Bluegrass Higher Education Consortium. We started with principles of agreement. Georgetown College could not agree with everything that University of Kentucky was doing, or Center College was not going to agree to thoughts by Eastern Kentucky University. But we got them together by developing basic principles of agreement. So, and I'm not even sure of the promulgated term, that's not even in the principles of agreement. That is in the resolution that our board signed. Am I correct on that, Joe? I think that's true. I appreciate it. I appreciate your comments.
Well, I mean, I like the idea and the concept, it's just it's 10 minutes worth of information and I'm not sure.
I was only told I had 15.
I was thinking a limited to five, but you did great.
Like I said, I can take those slides and expand on them for another 20 minutes on each slide.
I could do hours.
I didn't think you wanted that. Questions, comments?
My comment would be, regionally, I've said for a while that between Woodford, Fayette, Bourbon counties, that line is kind of drawn, and I think it's probably why two of the fastest growing counties are on either side of Fayette. You have Madison County and Scott County, and growth's being pushed both directions.
Right. Madison probably is in there, too.
Madison's almost as fast-growing as we are.
Yes.
And then...
No, you're right. And, you know, that's, the population was one of the slides. I mean, that's one of the biggest concerns and, you know, we want to, we want to continue to be who we are as a region, you know, culturally, from a heritage perspective, from a land perspective. We want to continue to be, you know, who we are. And that's the main reason that we want to make sure everybody is communicating. If it leads to other deals in the future that are good deals that are made between counties because we're communicating, great. You know, let's make those deals. But in terms of making region-wide deals, I don't see that happening. I see Scott County working with Fayette County on some deals and on some verbiage. You know, I see Mercer and Boyle and Lincoln working together down in that region. So, I see the future of this being more of that kind of thing where they're sharing, and it's not, would not only be land use, but sharing resources and sharing things like waste removal and all kinds of other fire and police protection services and things like that. So, this will lead to those, that kind of communication, I believe.
So, how closely are you working with all the Chamber of Commerce's in those communities? Is this a direct link with the chambers?
Yeah, yeah. Jack and I have been good friends for a lot of years. And I actually ran the Madison County Chamber, Richmond, Madison County, and the Woodford County Chambers under management contracts. So, we're good friends and work closely with Bob Quick and Commerce Lexington and a lot of the other ones. There are a lot of changes in chamber directors around the region. So, but, yeah, we stay in good connection and contact with them. And those are the groups that I think you're seeing more willingness to be collaborative and wanting to work with their neighbors and with the other counties. Not as much, Lexington sort of invites the region to be a part of what they do. So, it's not the same as being, that's not the same as being collaborative. You can come to our programs, you can be a part of our leadership trip or whatever. So, you know, I really think that from the outside in is sort of the way Bluegrass Tomorrow views the region. And I've worked in, like I said, Madison. I've also worked in Franklin, worked in Woodford, you know, so I'm a regional guy. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Charlie, are we looking for...
Well, what I might suggest, first of all, I think pretty much everything in here is in our comp plan and has been for years, with the exception of the collaborative effort across the region. We have been characteristically suspicious of collaboration throughout the region for at least the 10 or 12 months I've been involved, or 40 years, whichever thing first. What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is we just take a little time. Joe's not going to let us forget it. And then maybe next month, we could talk about it a little bit more. I really can't imagine that we can't sign off on it, but I agree with you. We ought to think about it more, talk about it more.
I mean, the ideas are great, don't get me wrong. I didn't mean to be attacking you at all.
No, and I didn't feel that way.
Good, thank you. There's a lot to, I mean, I think, you know, we definitely always want to be good neighbors as a county, to any of our counties that are joining us who are in the Bluegrass region. But it's a lot.
And that was also a good point you brought up about promulgation, because that's a bizarre phrase.
Well, when I saw that word, like I said, I'm not a big word user, so that kind of jumped out at me.
But promulgation of our brand, I mean, that's, that sounds like horse something.
I think maybe we should change that word.
I would change that word for sure.
That word needs to go.
That, by the way, was Mayor Christensen that put that word in.
He's a big word user, for the record.
Yeah, he's a...
It was Mayor Christensen. I'm going to blame him. I guess I should have looked up what that word meant, too.
I had to look it up. I didn't know what it was.
I know by your Christian son.
It's all right. Yeah, there you go. So, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Moving on, I think we just have one more. Yeah, one more thing on the agenda, which is the Zone Ordinance Amendment on outdoor storage and display of in commercial zero lot line. This is a public hearing. So, we need to open this up again for public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So, we'll open this for public hearing. Mr. Kane, are you doing a presentation?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I'd be happy to come back, by the way.
We may have you back. Go ahead, Joe. All yours. You're in between what's holding us from leaving.
Recommendations are, were just solidified based on the discussion last month, so there's no real changes. The three, I'll just go through them generally, I mean, specifically in a general way. Zero lot line, we talked about this a couple times. The recommendation for the text change is that, and I don't have a slide for it because it was, we talked about it before, but require in commercial zones a five-foot minimum setback unless there's an agreement, unless the adjoining lots, if they're owned by separate individuals, an agreement is presented between the two owners for construction along the line and maintenance, future maintenance. So, if you don't have that, there's a five-foot side setback and rear setback. So, no zero lot line except in the downtown district. So, that's kind of... So that's kinda what we had talked about, that's what the recommendation is. If you have any concerns or if you don't agree with that, then we can still change it, but that's what we're, that's what the proposal is.
How is that, the, the two parties agree, uh, is, is that with, where, where is that filed, so that fifty years down the road?
That would have to come before the approval. So if there's a development plan that shows a zero lot line building and the, the applicant that's presenting that development plan doesn't, doesn't own the lot next to it and they don't come with an agreement, then you deny it.
Would the agreement then be recorded on the deed?
Yeah, well, it would be, uh, it should be referenced in the deed, but at the very least it would be recorded as a mutual easement, uh, joint maintenance agreement, that kinda thing, it'd be in the county clerk's office. So when subsequent owners come along and they run the title on it, they will see that what they're looking to buy is subject to the rights of the adjacent neighbor.
And potentially on a zero lot line.
Yes. And then, of course, where they don't have that, then it'll be just subject to our files.
Because I think Charlie's, a point, I think what you're getting at, Charlie, is if Charlie and I are neighbors and we're friendly and we agree on the zero lot line and he puts his shed up against my shed, well, he sells his property, next thing you know, I don't like my neighbor, and we've got some issues, but it's on the deed, so you know what you're buying into.
Yeah, yeah, just like the deed, and, and when I say should, that's because the law's not gonna say it has to be, uh, but in order to follow the property, uh, the subsequent purchase has gotta be the county clerk's office. So wherein your, your, your description, you usually have reference to the plat. You should have a reference to deed restrictions, you should have a reference to this maintenance and joint easement obligation, uh, so that when whoever comes along to run the title, they see all these things, they know what they're getting into, or they know what they're avoiding, you know, whichever case may be. But that way, nobody can come in later and say, wait a minute, you've, you've imposed something on me and I didn't know about that.
Thank you.
That's what I was getting at, Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mifflin. Thanks, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so that's the zero lot line. Uh, the other changes are to, uh, adding definitions for outdoor storage, outdoor sales and display, and outdoor processing, and then a new definition for minor development plan, um, well, adding to the definition that says, um, any, any expansion, um, uh, will include, expanding the definition to include minor development plans that include building or outdoor storage expansions of ten percent of the total square footage or t, um, well, stop there. If, basically adding to the minor development, um, definition, an outdoor sales and display expansion of ten percent. So adding that in there. Um, and then the second, second part of it is, um, if you're, you can have outdoor display and sales, um, as opposed to outdoor storage of, um, materials and raw, raw materials. So you can have the outdoor sales and display, outdoor display, ten percent of your lot area. Um, and then if you already have a business, you already have a, a building, uh, build, a business going, and you wanna do outdoor display of material, of items that you're selling in your business, as part of your business, you can use up to ten percent of your lot for outdoor display. Um, and then that's, that's permitted by right, but you need to show it on a development plan. So you submit a minor development plan to our office showing where that display area is, and then we can approve it, approve it at the staff level, it doesn't have to come to Planning Commission. So that's where that definition, the adding that into our definition of minor development plan. So, uh, if you're over ten percent, if you wanna display, you know, materials you're selling in your business, more than ten percent of your lot area, you have to come to Planning, you have to put it on development plan, come to Planning Commission. So, um, that's that portion of it. And the other, um, portion of it is outdoor storage of materials is a conditional use permit everywhere, and we just make clear that in every district, all commercial districts, it's, it's a conditional use permit. And then we have standards already in the industrial zone for outdoor storage of raw materials or, you know, um, materials, not items, not finished items. Um, and those, these four items, they're already in our zoning ordinance, but they would apply to commercial districts now, not just industrial. So the storage is incidental and accessory to the principal use of the property, uh, meaning it's not, your business isn't just storing material, you know, storing whatever on the property. It's incidental to the, to the, um, the business on, operating on the property. Uh, it's not visible from any right-of-way or from any adjoining, uh, areas of different zoning classification. So if you back up to a residential area, you can't, you gotta screen it so it can't be seen. Uh, then, um, in that screening can consist of walls or mounds or fences, um, and then the boundary of the area where you're storing the materials has to be behind the setback, has to meet the setbacks of the district. And then there's, there can be additional, if there's, um, um, kind of, I guess, things specific to the site that would, um, necessitate an increase in the standard, the Board of Adjustment can increase the screening required or can modify the requirements to, um, fit the specific lot. So the BOA still has some, would have, the conditional use would have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment, not the Planning Commission. So the Board of Adjustment would have some leeway to add, um, additional requirements, screening requirements or, or whatever, to, um, to meet the standard of it not having an impact on the neighboring property. So, just to summarize, I wish I, I didn't redo the slides, so. I'll summarize without look, don't look at the slides, so. Zero lot line is changing to a five-foot setback. If you can't, if you, in order to not have, not have the five-foot setback, you have an agri, have an agreement with the neighbor, um, and present that at time of Planning Commission review of your development plan, and then that would have to, you know, be put into deed or on the plat with, um, you know, a shared maintenance agreement and, and construction easement to construct whatever. Um, and then adding the definitions, um, splitting off outdoor storage of materials from outdoor sales and display, like, you know, now they're kinda lumped together, splitting them into two, defining them separately, and then having outdoor storage of materials be a conditional use everywhere, and outdoor sales and display allowed by right as long as it's with, um, ten percent or less of the lot area. If it's more than ten percent, it would have to come to Planning Commission for approval. Uh, we talked about grandfathering of what's out there. Uh, we'd have to go, you know, if this, if and when this is approved, we'd have to kinda go through the process of, um, surveying, you, uh, windshield surveys, pictures, I don't know, a little research on what, what has been approved or what's illegal now, maybe put in illegally, and kinda, um, get a record of what would be grandfathered moving forward, 'cause this wouldn't be retroactive, it would be looking forward.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kane?
How are you gonna determine the difference between outside storage and outside sales with some businesses that's, I mean, there's, there's a fine line there.
Yeah. It'll, it is a little bit of a fine line for some uses. Um, you know, it's, the way it's defined is if you're selling it as a finished product as part of your business, then it's, it would be outdoor sales and display. If it's raw materials, you know, it would be outdoor storage. I mean, I can't think through all the scenarios right offhand where it would be confusing.
Well, the, the, what I'm thinking of is like southern states sell the big squeeze chutes outside. They're sitting outside, it's kind of a double deal there. You know, that's, so, how would, how would you do that?
But if it's for sale, it's gonna be considered display.
Regardless if...
But it's also...
Yeah, if they, if they've got some chutes here that are for sale and they've got fifty thousand of them stored, you know, at the other end of the lot, that's gonna be two different things. Obviously, there may be some that we can't quite tell the difference and we'll have to deal with that, but I'd say by and large, we can tell. If, if, if that's for sale and those are stacked...
But they're all for sale.
Well, a, and in some places, I mean, that's, that's what we'll find.
But I think they would be grandfathered in, just like traffic supply.
Yeah, well, I'm just, you know...
Some of those, some of those businesses, like southern states, would probably need to get a conditional use permit for some of their stuff, so that probably cover their whole business. You know, just get the conditional use for the whole business and then show, you know, at that time when they're getting the conditional use, they can, we can determine, you know, do you have a portion of it that's just kinda finished goods that you wanna display and, you know, cover it as part of the conditional use process.
Yeah, I would say if, if there's any doubt, you, you go to the conditional use permit.
Any other questions for Joe?
Thoughts, comments? Are we voting on this? Oh, we, it's a public hearing, so we need to open it up for any other public comments. Mr. Stone, are you here for this?
I'm just enjoying the conversation.
Well, welcome.
Well, you are a generous fellow.
And any others? So I think we would then close the public hearing.
Then you close the public hearing, and then a motion, if in fact we get one.
So I guess we have no more comment, we'll close the public hearing, and then I do need a motion, um, from the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we accept Joe's recommendations here for zoning ordinance amendments.
So a motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Mifflin, and we'll do roll call. I think we have to.
Yes, sir.
So, um, I'll even switch it up a little bit. Mrs. Mizell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell is absent. Um, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Hmm, yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you, Joe.
Alright.
And I think that's our agenda, so I'll make a...
Bring down, just bring down the hammer. You got a power man.
I need, I need a hammer.
Break down that hammer.
Joe, I need a hammer.
Alright.
Thank you all, have a good night.